Call to order for City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting on Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. I'd like you to roll call, please.
Diane Johnson.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Chad Johnson.
Here.
Jepson.
Kinda here, Spence.
Okay?
Uh, Novak.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Come on, Cronenberger.
Here.
Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Father, and to the Father, who has established us, one nation, under God, with no end, and with no end in us.
If I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Lisa, second from Diane. All those in favor?
I am.
We do have to do a roll call?
It's an amended agenda with the addition of, in the consent agenda, we will have item J, which is cable commission, the tricaster replaced. So it is amended, so I'll ask a second time if I could get a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Lisa and Diane, for a motion and second. All those in favor, we will go roll call because Ryan Jepson.
Jepson.
You can give a thumbs up or a thumbs down if you can hear us. I saw the "i." Yep.
Novak.
Hi.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Diane Johnson.
I mean, I.
Zimmerman.
Hi.
Chad Johnson.
Hi.
All right, it carries six to zero. Gets us to public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance, must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are in the subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule a consideration of the item on a future agenda. Leading off tonight, we've got Dallas Larson.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak with you tonight. This is regarding the data center. The newspaper provided a brief on the proposal for the annexation agreement with Randall Township in order to facilitate a data center. Cannon Falls appears to have stagnated over the last 10 or 15 years. There have been no consequential industrial or commercial development in the last decade. That shows in what we're paying for real estate taxes. Taxes on my home have increased over 70% in the last 10 years. We haven't seen any real restraint on the part of the city or the school, and frankly, even the county that used to be somewhat conservative has seemed to lost that conservatism, and spending is equal to that 70% over the last decade. So if there's no hope of seeing any spending side help, our only relief will be in acquiring new tax base. So regarding the data center, apparently there's some naysayers that feel that development has too many issues, and perhaps it's too premature to suggest that it's something we can support wholeheartedly or not, but it reminds me of 15 years ago when the proposal came forth for Invenergy. Lots of people feared air quality issues and other things. It really seemed almost irrational at the time. But as it turned out, all the concerns were addressed in the development agreement, and as some of us believed at the time, you're hard pressed to tell when that facility is even operating. So we can look back from here, and we can see that it's provided tremendous benefit to the city. And unfortunately, even though there's hundreds of thousands of dollars have been paid in from Invenergy, we haven't seen any real relief in our taxes over the last decade. So after this long drought in commercial development, we finally have a chance to secure a project that provides some needed relief to an overstressed tax base. One of you was quoted in the paper saying this project would be against our recreation, strength as a recreation town. Well, recreation does not pay for the costs of local government, so we need to look elsewhere to find some help. Data centers are being constructed all over the country. Mistakes have been made elsewhere that can benefit us. By adopting regulations that mitigate those concerns over water recycling, noise, and air quality and the like, we can have this benefit our community rather than go down the road to another city. I'd like to see all of you have a positive attitude towards this proposal, obviously not prejudging it because there's lots of decisions that get to be made along the way. But doing this project in a smart way will provide benefits for the community for many years to come. And I can tell you that my income in retirement hasn't kept pace with the 70% cost that the city has increased its spending over the last decade. So we really do need some relief, something else to give.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, is it Ryan Goken?
Good evening. My name is Ryan Goken. My address is 3037972nd Avenue Way. My partner and I recently bought our house at the Innova. I'm here as a concerned citizen to provide a critical point of view on the proposed data center. I've worked for nearly 20 years as an IT engineer in several data centers in and outside of Minnesota. I want to echo the points regarding the promise of jobs that I've seen mentioned in letters to the editor of the Beacon as well as mentioned in a previous meeting. The proposal makes it seem like the jobs being created are within the data center itself. However, Trac builds data centers to sell to the highest bidder. Most likely, that will be Meta, Amazon, Microsoft, or similar. Other than short-term contract, likely non-union construction jobs, there's no way Trac can promise any local employment after the build is complete, the contracts are up, and the data center is sold. Furthermore, a job inside the data center is highly skilled. Majority of these skilled jobs will likely be remote workers in and out of the United States. Hyperscale data centers are built for one purpose, and that is for massive compute power with huge energy and water resource needs. These developments target small towns with untapped power grids and water octaves, which is reminiscent of the exploitation that occurred during the oil boom in the early 20th century. The compute power will undoubtedly be used for training and building AI models with data that has been harvested from unsuspecting inuse. Some companies have allegedly trained their AI models on data that was gained illegally. The AI models here, the AI models being trained inside these types of data centers are used to extrude synthetic information in place of rigor and research done by real humans who are adept at interpreting and disseminating knowledge in their chosen fields. AI-backed applications have been entrusted to surveil and police the behavior of Americans, including workers at their jobs, journalists and activists, and students in schools. All this will be aided by a building that will be just one mile from where I stand. The city would not have a say in what happens inside the data center walls. There don't appear to be any public services offered backed in the city from this project. This is not a new Silicon Valley. The final tennis of the data center will not benevolently extend tech services to the city. It's being referred to as a technology park, but there won't be any playgrounds or any place where the community will spend their leisure time. There will only be bruntless architecture and dead end sidewalks. Entry to the area would be secured, and you would need a badge to be on the property. This will be better classified as a data refinery. You won't smell the fumes, but it will be just as toxic to the food. I don't believe that the data center is in the best interest of Cannon Falls. If the development moves for it, I would urge the council to negotiate tangible benefits and economic fail safes to the city. When the AI bubble bursts, and it most certainly will, Cannon Falls will be left unaided to deal with an abandoned development.
Thank you. Moving on, we go to tonight's presentation. We have Toward Zero Deaths, Anna Kolnhofer?
Yes.
All right.
Right.
Yeah.
So as you mentioned, my name is Anna Kolnhofer. I work for Goody County Health and Union Services as their Community Health Specialist, and I'm also the Goody County T2B Safe Roads Coordinator. I'm here presenting as well.
I'm here for the full disclosure.
Thank you for your time today. We like to do these presentations just to kind of raise awareness about the program that's happening locally and county-wide towards Zero Death programs that are happening for over a decade now, and just to give you some insight of what that program is and then hopefully what we're doing with that program. So the overall mission of Toward Zero Death is to create a culture for which traffic fatalities and serious injuries are no longer acceptable. We do this through an integrative application and a comprehensive approach, and these efforts are driven by data, best practices, and research. So to achieve that mission, we do it through the goals of pursuing public support of traffic safety as a priority, strengthening Toward Zero Death as a priority for all units of government and traffic safety partnerships, and we promote implement effective traffic safety initiatives. So we have the main values of continuous improvement, engaged partnership, and evidence-based approach. We have what we call our five E's approach. So this is really making sure that we're not siloing all of our engagements when it comes to traffic safety, but we're really all working together. So we pull in law enforcement, engineering, education and outreach, emergency medical and trauma services, and our fifth E is everyone. So everyone has a role in preventing these crashes, especially those that get behind the wheel, but even pedestrians. So why traffic safety matters. So last year in Minnesota alone, there was 477 fatalities, so people that never made it home due to a crash. Nearly 30,000 were severely injured, and every single day there is 174 crashes, 65 injuries, and one person tragically dies due to a crash every day. The reason we show you these numbers, I know sometimes it's hard to wrap your mind around it, but behind every single number is a story, and some of them is in a family member, a loved one, and it's a real life loss up the road. So this is kind of an overarching view since the beginning of Toward Zero Death being implemented. So you can see all the way back to 2000, and overall, the trend line has decreased. And actually, today I just sat in on the medical examiner's report for Goody County, and that was one of the biggest takeaways, is we're seeing less crashes happening in our county, which is mainly attributed to the education and enforcement efforts that are going around locally, targeting traffic safety in our community. So you can see that red line is where the trend line was going prior to Toward Zero Death being implemented in our state and locally. And then you can see now, even just in the last year, we're at like 414 deaths back in 2024. The goal for this year, 2025, is 225 crashes, but definitely an improvement over the past years. This again kind of shows you how many lives overall have been saved, have we not? Taken an approach where we bring all the E's together and focus on traffic safety. So about 4,526 lives saved if we didn't interrupt that trend line where the crashes were headed. Again, kind of another view about this. This looks more at the serious injuries rather than just the traffic deaths alone, but definitely an overall decrease. Still a long way to go to get that trend line up. And then I always like to mention this specifically because we still are in August, but we really focus on what we call 100 deadly days of summer. So this is the time between Memorial Day and Labor Day. So during this time, there's more events, there's more people on the roads. Some of the events have more drinking, and there tends to be more impaired driving, more distracted driving, and a higher increase in fatalities on the road. So as Lieutenant Burke will share, some of our efforts are really focused around the summer months. We have a lot of enforcement waves, program education, so we can really target the crash fatalities that happen in this month.
Fatalities are occurring in rural Minnesota where we have our higher speeds. A lot of times, yep, they occur in the metro. There's a lot of work, but majority of them are actually occurring in rural areas, and that's why, I'll speak rural area is very important to the education piece and the enforcement pieces, getting people to slow down in rural situations.
So you can see 38% of fatalities, an increase of 38% of fatalities happened during that 100 days. So year-to-date traffic-related deaths. So as of June 10th, which is where we have our most recent data collected, there's been 137 traffic-related deaths already on the Minnesota roads. So as I mentioned before, our goal is to decrease it down to 225 crash-related deaths in 2025 total. So definitely still efforts being done to keep that number under that record. And you might notice just the language that we're using. We refer to crashes as crashes, not accidents. That's very purposely. So we do really view it as a crash, not an accident. We full-heartedly believe that every crash is preventable, and we have a role, everyone on the road, road has a role in making sure that they aren't prevented, and it is really realistic to prevent all the crashes. So that kind of leads me into the question that a lot of people ask. So the tagline, Toward Zero Deaths. People ask, can we really get to zero? Is it attainable? Is it realistic? It is. It takes all the effort, it takes education, it takes enforcement, the emergency responders, and it takes each of you really making sure that when you get behind the wheel, you're making smart choices, you're ready to drive, you're alert. So my favorite part is talking about how we're applying our goals in this program locally and so on.
So some of you might have heard about the Mott Crash. We're trying to do it every other year. This was the year that we did it. This year, Officer Anderson was the officer that participated in supporting background function, making sure everything got to be the same way it should be. So if anybody's been able to see that presentation, it's a very good one. One thing in the Mott Crash that I never had to do was actually go to the after presentation. So this year, I have to go to the after presentation. Most of the kids actually stayed awake in a dark room talking about something that's maybe not as entertaining to them, but the trip route was really interactive, and I was able to, I think, get the message across. That's what we're looking for, is educating young so that they realize that these things do happen, and the kids are.
And it's very strategic, also pairing Mott crashes with an impact speaker. The data has shown that that sticks longer with students, having a testimony and a story actually related to the Mott Crash. So that was a great event put on by Cannon Falls High School. And then as a county-wide initiative that we started this year is an adult detention center putting on traffic safety presentation and activities. So myself and my regional coordinator had a traffic safety presentation that we shared with both the female inmates one day and then the male inmates another day, and then have some traffic-related activities. So the focus was on the four main contributing factors to crashes: speed, impaired driving, distracted driving, and then being unbelted. And it was really impactful. A lot of people that are in the adult detention center have some sort of DUIs, they do drive in high speeds, oftentimes unbelted, and they may have a short sentence or term and be back on the roadways, and that's a population that's oftentimes missing that education. So really great events this year.
So then we had the kickoff, the summer, put on by the Chamber, so I was able to get the seatbelt condenser. Anybody get to try it out? So it simulates a crash with seatbelt on, and if you ever seen the video at least, it just rolls down that little ramp there and comes with a complaint stat. And everybody, I think we had 33 people ride it, and I asked them, I said, if that seatbelt went on, where would you have been? And they said they would have been right into that metal faceplate where they were full right up. And that was only recreating a 10 mile an hour carriage.
Yeah.
It's slow. So I mean, think about when we're going 30 miles an hour, and if we get a car going 30, it's a 60 mile an hour, how important that seatbelt is. So it was a great learning experience. Unfortunately, we couldn't let super young kids, the young kids all wanted to ride it. It's not designed for that purpose.
And right around this time as well, there's enforcement wave, or enforcement on the road specifically to look for unbelted drivers and make sure that we're having extra enforcement since seatbelts are really lifesaving. So also pairing the education with enforcement can really come.
One of the things that's been on the rise is ATV crashes and young drivers not wearing helmets. So what we focused on at the fair was ATVs. There was a great story that we were playing along with this display, and this crashed ATV, which an individual was driving at a high rate of speed, and came around a corner, and he crossed the roadway, crashed into a tree. Both were seriously injured, and he worked with the state to donate his ATV so it can go around the region and educate people, show importance to wear helmets. I think one of the things people don't realize with the side-by-sides is, oh, you're safe in the side-by-side, you got a seatbelt. Still need to wear a helmet. So it's not a car, when they go off-road, their head is going to hit things that are designed for your head to hit, right? It's not like a car where you have all the soft areas. So we were able to display that during the fair, and a lot of people asked questions. Hopefully that educated a few people and gave them a sense.
So how can you get involved? Goody County Toward Zero Death has a Facebook page. We're constantly doing different campaigns focusing on different traffic safety initiatives. I know that Cannon Falls Police Department also has a Facebook page that they're very active in. So just staying engaged in what the events are, going to the events if you're able, and supporting it. That way is very helpful. We also have Southeast Regional Steering Committee meetings. These are hosted at the Minnesota Department of Transportation Office in Rochester, but also held virtually as well. So if you did ever want to join those meetings to see what trends we're seeing on the roads and what we're doing in regards to traffic safety, you're more than welcome. Just reach out to myself, and I'd be able to, we might do with that. And then we also have a Toward Zero Death Safe Roads Coalition throughout our county. So Lieutenant Burke's a part of that coalition. We have various people from different police departments locally. We have emergency responders. We have various people from public health and education at State Point as well, making sure that we're doing all we can to collaborate locally and increase our traffic safety in the county. And then we also have our Toward Zero Deaths statewide conference. This year it's October 21st to 22nd, and that is hosted in Prior Lake, Minnesota. So also a great opportunity to hear more about the traffic initiatives happening statewide. And that is all we have for you today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, I was gonna ask a question. With our region being the southeast, Highway 52, Lieutenant Burke, you had said rural areas and county roads, all that stuff. Ever since COVID, it seems like people drive maybe 10, 15 miles an hour over the limit. Is Highway 52 in our region considered dangerous or more dangerous than it was maybe 15 years ago?
What I found interesting is we closed, shut down the stoplights. It sounded like people drove faster and didn't slow down. We actually had a lot of crashes during that time, which kind of threw us for a curve. We thought, oh no, they're just gonna keep driving through. So I don't know if it was just a happy chance that there were crashes after that close, but the biggest thing is that enforcement piece to show people that officers are there. That's what helps slow people down. We don't want our officers up there all the time. It's paying a lot of taxes. You want your cops in town, so we've kind of left that focus with state patrol. But like Anna said, you know, our numbers in Goody County have actually been very good, very good around the communities, the actions that are being taken.
And I'd like to note, too, another thing that we do quarterly is fatal reviews. So with our local police departments and actually State Patrol and Minnesota Department of Transportation Engineers, we all sit in a room, and we review crashes that have happened. And it's actually really, really important to have our engineers at the table because we only have so much capacity for law enforcement. If there's something we can do to alter that roadway to make it safer, if we can put in a stoplight around about, if we can take out a culvert that maybe if someone went in the ditch, they would have a death from rather than just going in the ditch, those are really important things that we can make changes to. And we've actually seen changes. When we brought things up to the table, Minnesota Department of Transportation, especially on those state-owned roads, really take responsibility and make those changes pretty swiftly.
One of the biggest changes you see right now is Highway 56 and coming down. We had a lot of crashes. The first one they did is they put the flashing stop Zion on, they put flags on the stop ahead to get people to stop at Highway 56. It has a little bit of a curve, and they had the flashing lights forever, and then people just kind of focused on that old lighting flash right away for a bit. It's also not perfect systems. Those are the kind of things that we talk about, how can we make things better, try to get that down.
Any other questions from the council? Diane?
And this is actually, we've talked about motorized vehicles all the way down to the EVs and those. Like, the motorcycle concern, not just car crashes, but when cars crash in, people on bikes, kids on bikes, people walking. Is that part of your safety study too? Because I think around here, that can be, it's an area of concern.
Yeah. We actually, countywide, also have a program that you may be familiar with called Safe Roads to School. And so we collaborate a lot because they're very focused on pedestrians, specifically students in school areas, but making that infrastructure changes, making sure there's a clear crosswalk, making sure there's lights, making the traffic clear of that. But yes, it all interconnects, and we really do try to collaborate a lot because there's a lot of intervening programs that are happening.
And I think we've been working on different things around the school. I live on Highway 17, which is 55 miles an hour coming into town downhill, no shoulders, and we've got lots of folks who walk the dogs, kids on bikes. I was coming home earlier and two kids on a bike stopped right in the middle of the road. Car, I'm coming one way, car's coming the other. Thank goodness, car who had the 55 mile an hour speeds, I saw the kids and slowed down. And I was reading articles in the paper that said the old rule about the 85% rule in terms of setting speed limits is being reviewed. We've been trying to get that speed limit lowered, at least as one way to try to offer a little bit more safety to our people who use that rule and put lights. Is there a push in the county to try to figure out how we can take some of these rules? And yes, by the 85% rule, you should probably put it at 90. I don't know, but that's not safe.
So a lot of changes are statistic based. There is zero statistics for that roadway? We have tried five years ago, I think?
I know, and that's why I'm still trusting to say it doesn't. As we said in a recent meeting, my association, what, how many dead bodies are we gonna have planned on the road before we actually do something? Do we want to wait for somebody to get seriously injured or die? You know, is that the statistic we need, or can we use common sense and say, there are people living out there, we've got a whole ton of kids and people walking, you see it. Shouldn't that be statistic enough to say that will drive much safer? Yeah. And I guess I don't know how much influence you have, but...
Yeah, I'd love to connect with you, and if you, I can give you my email. There's infrastructure grants. Oftentimes, that's the way we have to go about it if it's not a priority on a state level, or we just don't have the finances. We apply for grants to change in infrastructure. That's something we could definitely talk about.
Yeah. I mean, I'd be happy at this point if we could put the speed limit down to 45 and give us a fighting chance. Now, I mean, I hate walking down that road.
But definitely I'd like to.
Yeah. Just changing the speed limit doesn't cost us any more than changing the science. If we get past that silly 85% rule and the old way of statistics saying you gotta get dead bodies before we actually do something sensible. I'm sorry, I was...
No, that's all right. We agree with you. So thank you so much for your presentation. And honestly, I know that Mott Crash, the impact on the families and people involved, so you're doing good.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thanks for that.
Right. Moving on, consent agenda tonight. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. Remember, this is amended, so I'll go through it. Item A, adjust and correct claims for the accounting period ending August 14th, 2025. Item B, meeting minutes, August 5th, 2025. 2025, city council meeting. Item C, second reading and adoption of ordinance 409 and ordinance amending City Code Chapter 152.258 related to parking stall, aisle, or driveway design and design standards. Item D, second reading and adoption of ordinance 410 and ordinance amending City Code Chapter 152 related to zoning. Item E, approved gambling premises permit for the application of United Way. Item F, approve trial and possible purchase of a Grid B AP 500 wet well mixer. Item G, approve cash match for small time grant for wavefront trail signs. Item H, Resolution 2822 authorizing acceptance of donated improvements at John Birch Park. Item I, Resolution 2823 approving of preliminary platform or Gorman addition. And item J, which was added, the cable commission and the Tri-Caster replacement. If there is anything the council would like to be pulled down to council business?
Item E?
Item D, second reading will now be council business. Item B. Anything else from the council? Hearing now, I would accept a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Motion from Lisa, second from Chris. Roll call vote please.
Novak?
Hi.
Kronenberger?
Hi.
Diane Johnson?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Chad Johnson?
Aye.
And Jepson?
Did we get an aye out of Jepson if we... Oh, that's right. Sorry. Jep, did we get a plus? There we go. Thumbs up. So that passes 6-0. Gets us to our council business tonight. Item A, Resolution 2824, the matter of the orderly annexation between the City of Cannon Falls and Randolph Township pursuant of Minnesota statutes 414.0325. John?
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight we have a resolution between us and Randolph Township. We have been working on this for a number of months, trying to find the balance between as land comes in, addressing concerns that Randolph Township has with the potential development of the data center in the area. And I would say we had a very good conversation, very productive meetings, and have concluded that we have an orderly annexation for, between us and the township as well as the current landowners and the prospective buyers for the property. So I did try to incorporate a table that breaks down kind of the key elements that we were discussing. So there is contributions that are made for the township offsetting the loss of tax base. Those do come from the city, but as part of our conversations and negotiations with tract for the data center development, those funds would be paid by the developer. There's a buyer fee that they will pay to the township. And then the component about attachment, I just want to add clarity to this. So the township just wants to have some level of assurance. They're not trying to, I'd say in any way, force this to go back to them. But if there were, if the development was not to be able to go through, they want assurances that the property can come back to them and continue being used as, so it does get purchased, but nothing gets developed that stays in potentially part of land, that there would be measures in place that they could ask. So what we tried to align that with is if we bring infrastructure to that site, so our sewer main that we do plan and intend to develop if the data center development goes through, that within two years, we bid and award the contract, and within two years after that bid award, we have it constructed. So it is something that we're already discussing and would plan for if this is approved, so that you would very likely easily be able to... Our stance too as well is we do, you know, the tract development, see a lot of positive benefits with that if it is approved. If it is, you know, if it does not, something changes in the market, then it makes sense. Something, you know, does not develop, that still is an area that has been a part of our comp plan for development for industrial use. So the AURI are still, you know, has a five year timeline, so it still shows that there's that potential of those continuing benefits for some type of development out there. So it is something that I think the city would still pursue, trying to get that development or the charter developed to the area. It'll, you know, something that we've addressed and explained and indicated that in any development agreement, that would be a high priority for the city. So we would want to deal with that. So the other, another piece was for the well that is part of one of the properties that irrigation, if it were to be, receive an amendment to its use through the DNR, that they would slightly be able to reduce the total appropriation and only use it in case of emergency, if the cities had planned outage or this, that wasn't able to serve that, that they would have the ability to access that well if they did their thing through the DNR. And finally, the buffer area is increased to make sure that there's 200 feet of natural area between that and the properties and then making sure that there's tree plantings in there. I think the 25% number, they did the calculation, it's 270 trees or something, to be included in that, within that buffer, so adding some, or natural buffering between the homes that are there currently.
Discussion. Council has questions from the council.
One maybe point of clarification, and I think I, so we're obligated within two years to put the infrastructure.
Bid the infrastructure and then two years after that. So we have a four year, yeah, total timeframe from...
And then is there something here that says you actually have to build it out or an industry after that or just, so it's just the infrastructure?
Yeah, infrastructure in the ground to be able to service. So it's about a mile of infrastructure. Fortunately, it's the plan for development. We have existing county right of way that we can build alongside versus having to go underneath the road. So we're in really good position where that relatively speaking is one of the easier starting.
I just wanted to make sure it was just the infrastructure and not an obligation to add some sort of industry built there.
Bid out contractors type in there, not flowing, not necessarily connected.
Are we planting 150 trees or not?
Can I get some clarity on the well? So as I understand it, there's no way for them to draw from that well unless it is a emergency condition. So they're still allocated the 44, 40 million, 45 million yales per year for the city. They would, they are not allowed to use that well for other purposes.
The city allocation hasn't been finalized or determined yet. So the well appropriation right now stands at about 41 million. It would, as part of the agreement, it is, they have to provide notice. There has to be some level of city not able to supply them water that they can then tap into to use. So something would happen, happen, the city can't get them the water, they can then use that for... And it still needs to go through the DNR to get the amended amendment for the color board. It's changing its current appropriation use from A base variation to something more
Any other questions that come? Hearing now, I would accept a motion to approve Resolution 2824. Motion from Chad. Second from Lisa. Any further discussion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote.
Sorry. Diane Johnson?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Chad Johnson?
Aye.
Jepson? And Novak?
Aye.
It's approved. 6-0. Gets us to item B, which was D on your consent agenda, the second reading and adoption of ordinance 410 and ordinance amending City Code Chapter 152 related to zoning. Reminder, we have stricken the phrase "and summary of publication." So this was marked in the, I crossed out by Sarah to say there will not be a summary. So Diane, can you pull that down?
Yes, and I expressed my proposition to the text amendment at the last meeting, so I will not repeat that. But to emphasize it, I certainly know that our town could wisely use all this additional tax revenue that comes in. I do not deny that at all. And as people say, well, you know, one data center is not so bad. And I, you know, I'm not saying anything good or bad or otherwise about the, you know, current developer. But I also want to say, you know, this is letting the genie out of the bottle. Once we do, there's no stuffing the genie back in. And so although we say we've got all of these conditions that would limit it to just one data center, there's already rumors of a second. And we say, well, we don't, you know, they have to come up with all these requirements. Well, obviously, if they're gonna bring it up, you know, if a second or third data center offers us tons and tons of money, it's gonna be hard pressed for the future councils to say no again. And so I just want us to be very, very aware of the fact that if we allow this tax amendment to allow data centers in our community, we might say, oh, one is all we need. We're not gonna let more. We might say we have ways to control that, but you offer enough money and we come up with enough solutions, there's every possibility that there'll be more. Because of that, I will have to continue to uphold that as I have this answer.
Any other discussions on item B?
Diane, I guess I kind of, I just wanna, maybe it's time for me to open the bag on this topic. I do want to say one of the things, you know, I get emails from people, I hear concerns. It's a tough decision all around for me because I feel like some concerns are valid. I feel like job numbers are not really there. I feel like taxes aren't very relevant and all that stuff. One of the things I struggle with is if we, the council, say no here, what's stopping developers from going to Hampton, going from the same auto firm, going from the same power source and us not seeking benefits? So I can tell you, I mean, I share similar concerns, but I also have that weighing on my mind. I feel like I wouldn't, myself, I mean, I really have to reason through all this because if we say no, or if I say no and that happens, I feel like I'd be doing a disservice based on that whole tax base going way too, in all those concerns we have about the environment or whatever, what have you, are still, still valid, but it still happens to our environments very closely. But I hear what you're saying and I hear other people who email me and, you know, give me calls too. So I appreciate that. It's a tough one all around.
Any other questions?
I kind of see the building out, the scaling of the water and the energy. It's probably close to where the worst it's gonna be. The technology, the servers, over the years, like they've gotten better. They use less energy, they require less cooling. Get on the train now and it'll get better. And then we can get the benefits and they can stay in the town versus being in Hampton or somewhere else where they do one of, just do it. We gotta set the regulations right. We gotta make sure that if they go over, that we've got large enough fines for it. See how that got it through right and then should be more.
Take a chat. Hearing nothing else, I would accept a motion to approve item B of City Council's consent agenda, the second reading and adoption of ordinance 410, ordinance amending City Code Chapter 152 related to zoning. Motion from Laura. Second from Lisa. Take a roll call vote.
Diane Johnson?
No.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Chad Johnson?
Aye.
Jepson? Novak?
Aye.
And Kronenberger?
Aye.
It passes with the tally of 5-1. Reports for the night.
I just wanted to give a brief update today. We had a group in town that was from the Minnesota Department of Ag and also AURI, which is Agricultural Utilization Research Institution. I had to write that down. And the two groups had their annual joint meeting here in Cannon Falls. It was about close to 50 people. And they were here to kind of talk about our, not just their business that they had to conduct, but we did a tour of Cannon Falls. We went to Verndale, we went out to Josephson's Farm, where the corn, the famous corn is grown. And the FFA students, actually, one of the students had actually fixed the corn very early in the morning. She spoke and then...
I heard Mr. Pluskott drove the bus.
Yeah, Mr. Pluskott drove the bus. And then we also had Mike Lawrence, Lawrence Meets come and speak. So we had a lot of representation for Cannon Falls and our local food producers. And then afterward, they wrapped up about 3:30, they went across to the winery. And I can't tell you how many people came up and just gave glowing reviews of Cannon Falls and how lucky and fortunate we are to have this community and all the amenities, how beautiful the town was. And people are asking like, is there a hotel here? Can we come back or stay and a weekend and a girl's trip and whatever? And I mean, I just think, you know, we live here and I think that, you know, maybe we take it for granted. But we really do have a wonderful community. And for those that maybe don't frequent some of our local amenities or our producers that we have, I really encourage you to do so and take advantage of it because we really are very fortunate in our little town that we have. And we really impressed some very, and I mean, some really big people today. So I just wanted to make sure that it was on record and also to let our council know that we had a really good showcase of our community today.
Thank you. I got a chance to meet some of those people here before coming to the meeting and glowing reviews is probably the quiet way to say it. There were people that were saying, look at moving here from Metro and all the things you said. I think we forget kind of what John Dollard said of, sometimes when you live in, you forget a town of our size, the amenities that we have. Some people think, well, that should mean, you know, sometimes you see the online comment of, why don't we have a Target? Why don't we have a Walmart? All those things. You might not have those amenities, but Cannon Falls, people forget. They think of it as coffee and sandwich and ice cream. It's like they're a cheese producer that is in stores all across the state. Verndale has a national stamp of the National Co-op Grocers. So for a town of our size, we definitely have a lot of amenities, but they might not be the thing that people see or they might think of if it's a town of 4,000. We have a lot of assets that are very unique to a town of our size. I'm glad the amount are really low. Public Works, Park Ward, no, I guess. Who wants to take that one?
Chad.
Chad, go ahead.
Okay. Well, everything was on the consent agenda. So yeah, I don't really have anything to...
You don't want to talk through the AP 500 wet well mixer?
You want me to tell you all about it?
No, no, no. We give you a thumbs up. It's all good. It's all good.
Well, you'll save it for your update.
Yeah, that's, I'll get that in my report.
All right, all right. Planning Commission met on August 11.
And commentary platform for the Gorman addition will improve on consent agenda. We also approve with our engineers blessing the decay well at Sunrise.
All right, we'll run the order, Chad.
All right. Mill and Overlake State, say Highway 20 going out of town. That will wrap up this weekend, 21st, 22nd. So yeah, thanks for bearing with us. They, they kind of got the lead a little bit on Saturday with the rain.
Will that include the striping?
That'll happen Thursday. They'll start striping Thursday, Friday, and then once striping's done, they'll, for traffic. Last year, the EPA and Department of Health mandated that we do a lead copper survey and figure out what, you guys remember the letters that we sent out. They gave us such a short timeline, we didn't get a complete survey done. We weren't able to get ahold of everybody and just had really incomplete information. So they've opened it back up, gave us another really short timeline. So in September, WHKS, well, then they're working, the state's working directly with WHKS and not through us. So WHKS will have a couple representatives. We will send out letters to everybody. WHKS will be sending out letters similar to what we got last year. And then they will have a couple representatives, I think it was from noon to eight o'clock at night knocking on those doors and so that they can do a site inspection of... at night, knocking on those doors, and so that they can do a site inspection of if you, for sure, will identify your pipes inside your house as lead copper or whatever, do a source identification. I just wanted to give you a heads up, there will be more information, people work with Laura and get it on the website and also the Facebook page, just trying to make everybody aware. They will be, have name tags and official legit, so.
All right.
Last thing, we will start our Mill and Overlay projects here in the next couple weeks with industrial Moberd, and then also John Birch Park Alley, and then a small, little bolt section.
Thank you. Thanks, Jep. Izzy.
I just wanted to give a quick update on McDonald's. I'm sure a lot of people are excited or anxious about that. So the next planning commission is the ones who are doing all the approvals for additional uses and variances for the McDonald's. So that will be happening September eighth.
Wonderful, thank you. Laura, anything else that you'd like to? John Berger.
So while you guys were enjoying your council meeting in your last session, we got to enjoy Night to Unite. We had seven parties, spread the officers about to all the parties, and I think we all came back pretty full. It's hard to go to the second party, and they're like, we got food, and I was like, ah, I might have ate too much at the last one, but give me a little more. So it was, it was a great time, we had great weather. Hopefully next year we can move the council meeting, and everybody can partake in the year end, so, so, yeah, it was a great time. We experienced a little bit of rain over the last couple weeks, last week, so it looks like everything is peaked out with the river, so we're not expecting any significant flooding. In fact, they're supposed to dry for the next couple days, and it looks like it'll start going down. So, yeah, thanks.
Random question, are we given a notification from Northfield with stuff in the river, or due to the rain, did they let some? No?
Not that I know of.
There was a rumor that I heard, but nothing official. Okay. Sarah? Shelley? John?
So I do have news, QuickTrip has informed us that they did not extend their last purchase agreement. So I do actually have a meeting with MINDA tomorrow to discuss ways that we can either move that project forward, bring that project back. A lot of it had to do with just the uncertainty around what improvements need to be made along Highway nineteen and Dow Street and Highway fifty-two off-ramp and Casey's there. We hopefully can establish a little better communication and a little more consistency in terms of response, that would help create some, some uncertainty, or at least acknowledgement or confidence from QuickTrip that moving forward with a solution, we'll get, we'll get to some sort of solution. But at this time, it was, uncertainty was, and our team could bear for that. But it wasn't, I do want to emphasize that the feedback I got was not on the city. The city has been, the comments for the city's been very responsive, very good to work with, and they are still very interested in being here, if they can be this site or another site, if we can find ways to address that situation. So hopefully my conversations start to improve that process tomorrow. Additionally, we do want to acknowledge in the planning commission, September eighth, likely we'll have a joint work session prior to that, so if that's available. We met previously with Tract before this meeting, they have their amended applications that they'll be submitting here this week, and we will be starting to discuss those development in terms as well. So just kind of laying the runway here for, for the decision. So while we're not far along in the total decision-making process and getting everything to the point where it's presented to you for approvals, we have come a long ways in terms of those conversations. So we hope that it does, that previous work will help us to kind of understand what it is that they're asking for, how the development is looking to, would take place, so that we can see, see where the mission is. It is complicated, it is gonna take a lot of time, our, even with the tax amendment for the data centers, the improve, that's still create, there's still a process in which a lot of this has to happen, primarily to make sure that we have that control that we want, so that it isn't a development that we see in the future as being an issue for it. We want to make sure that those controls are in place, that safeguards are there for the city, so that risk is as low as you can. Is it without risk? No, nothing in terms of, especially when you're talking huge things that take up two-hundred some acres, nothing's risk-free, but we're trying to accomplish and get to a point where presenting February, this board and the planning commission, you know, the ways that the issues aren't being treated. And I know there's been a lot of conversations, a lot of, a lot of concerns being addressed. We haven't been in a position where we've been able to directly answer them, because we haven't been in a position until now, with the annexation going through, where we have the real authority to make those decisions and provide that, those considerations. So from this point forward, through the end of the process, we, you know, we will be able to address the concerns that are, that do arise, be able to talk more specifically about how we are responding to that, ultimately, you as council have to make a decision to make in terms of plan.
Going back to what you said about QuickTrip, just to reiterate, more of MINDA, city, however, Zabroda, didn't they see something similar, where purchase agreement may have expired, and then it came back? So I'm just trying to be optimistic for the communities.
Yeah, so it is, yeah, I would, I would say the feedback that I've had, even since they informed me the purchase agreement, is that they still want to be somewhere in the, in the street, and that very much is on their radar, fits within their models. That location was really good for them, in terms of that, it was really good for the city in terms of an opportunity to redevelop, a site that has some trouble. So we have an interest in one, so, but we also need to address and work with MINDA as well, because at some point, if we not, if we're not, then we'd be in a position where we're in conflict, and that's not, that's not how I intend on operating in my profession, where we can find solutions in terms of these potential issues.
Yep, very much similar to what Diane was saying before with the presentation, I'd much rather that we have things right before the building is built and starts working and operating with Dow Street. You know, that's a, it's a tricky area, as is.
Just right at this moment, the timeline's not aligning with the expectations.
Thank you, John. Laura.
I'm good.
Chris.
How's it?
Diane.
Lisa.
I attended the lines that were talking at the, they did a brain book reading this weekend, I'd like to thank you for that, it's pretty cool.
Very cool.
They're going on wholesale this twenty-fifth to thirtieth of the Blackwood too.
Awesome. Awesome. Jep, do you have anything that you want to share? All right. I'm good too, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be absent from the last meeting, being on that church trip to Colorado was, it was an amazing trip, I'm lucky that I got to share it with two of my children, who was favorite farming and some drinks from it and all those things, but climbing them off was pretty damn cool. So, all right, I would accept a motion to adjourn. Motion from Lisa. Second from Diane, and we have to take a roll call even on the adjourned notice.
Zimmerman.
Hi.
Chad Johnson.
Hi.
Jepson. Novak.
Hi.
Kronenberger.
Hi.
And Diane Johnson.
Hi.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.